Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on City Council. Welcome to our public work session. At this time, I would ask my council members to please indicate your presence electronically.
Six members of City Council are present.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam Clerk, I mean Madam Interim City Manager, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, and Portsmouth family. As we begin our presentations today regarding the budget, we're going to have a couple of people present. So what we're going to start with, it was supposed to be the Public Safety Complex update. Ms. Hill? Mr. James Wright will begin that presentation.
Welcome, Mr. Wright.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. Going to give you an update on the Public Safety Complex. So a brief overview, we've done a lot of work on this project. We have a centralized location to make our law enforcement more visible and accessible to the public, in addition to optimizing response time for incidents. And one of the key components for this is it'll help with recruitment and retention of police officers. So back in 2016, when Public Safety was located in the building across the plaza, we started to look at potential locations around the city for the Public Safety Complex. Keeping in mind our downtown redevelopment strategies of trying to minimize our public footprint downtown. And these are some of the criteria at the bottom that you see that we examine where we're looking for a place for the Public Safety criteria. Size of the parcel, location and access, zoning, flood plain, drainage and flooding, and the size of the parcel being the limiting factor. We're looking at a parcel that needed to be a minimum of five acres in size. And we were focused on those parcels that were city-owned or owned by entities, well, municipal or government-type facilities. So we looked at 10 sites during this evaluation. As you can see, the majority of those sites either have other identified uses or are under construction. Two sites, Willet Drive and the Sportsplex, are sites that don't have anything currently going on with them. And the former Willet High School site was the priority site that was selected by the group that was looking. And both chiefs, both fire and police at the time, were on board. So the work to date, we have programming, basis of design, industrial cost estimates led by a team from Clark Nixon. The overall goal of the project being a creative facility that meets the goals based on consolidation, optimization of staff arrangements, for maximum efficiency and collaboration. We want it to be a modern facility, one that will represent the men and women in the uniform that it represents. We want to maximize safety in the design and making it open and inviting to the public for public engagement. And then have the departments within both police and fire located so that they could have those adjacencies that would provide efficiencies and collaboration. And once again, as you see, a theme that'll go throughout this, a facility that increases retention and helps it with recruiting. So a couple of the programming elements that were key, there were 19 groups within the Police Department and Fire Department that were actually part of this process. There were three groups from other city departments. They took actually site tours of some of the newer facilities that were in other localities so that they could take a look at those facilities, get their brains working, get ideas about how they could be laid out within a new facility, maybe some things they hadn't thought about so to get that discussion going. Two alternative sites on Willet Drive, one at the former high school site and Willet Hall site, then one across the street. Both those sites were investigated and evaluated with those criteria above. And then based on the site evaluations, we put the most viable options for both sites. So what we end up with is a Public Safety Complex that's approximately 140,000 gross square feet, a two-story building with parking lot and site improvements. And then you have a warehouse just under 27,000 square feet for their apparatus and other types of storage that they might need. In the main building, you have police and fire administration. And then highlighted here are a couple of amenities in the facility that sort of make the facility a current and modern facility. Couple of things to take note of is the EOC and communications will be moved, computer classrooms, a residential simulator for training, defense tactics training, enforced simulator, and then those amenities that help them maintain conditioning such as gym and basketball court. Back then, pre-pandemic, 2019, the estimated cost was $65 million. It is a challenge to fund a building of that size and magnitude, so we've looked at a couple of different opportunities here in the past couple of years to try to get funding for it, one of those being BRIC funding, building resilient infrastructure in communities. We submitted an application back in 2020. It ranked high in the state, VETM passed that application onto FEMA where it died on the vine. No projects outside of California receive funding for the initial round of BRIC. Come back again to, I actually should say 2022, is 2022 congressional direct spending. We basically, Congress each year has its former earmarks, so we're able to submit up to five applications to our congressmen and to the senators. They vet those projects and then they decide whether they're going to carry those projects forward, they'll carry it forward if they make the cut to appropriations. Appropriations makes their decisions and determines whether those projects are going to be funded as part of the congressional budget for that fiscal year. This project did not make it through FY 2022. We're going back to the drawing board and reexamine some of those federal opportunities based on current conversation and still looking to try to fund the project. So where we are today, updated construction costs, $75 million. That is just basic cost escalation, doesn't involve any COVID factors or any things we're seeing with supply chain. We need approximately $8 million for design, that is outside of the $75 million for construction. And this just shows the different steps of where we would take to actually get to complete the design and get into construction. So you're talking about 24 months for design and another 24 months for construction. And we're currently reopening the program document because of what did occur during pandemic and getting into the initial design. So this is the Willet Drive site, the optimal location pick, concept site plan. This is what it could potentially look like, and just another rendering. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question is, did our congressional delegation shed any light on why our application has fallen short?
It's not necessarily an application, so to speak. So every year for the senators, you can submit up to five projects, and there, they can submit more projects than a congressman can. Their spending limit is more, but you're talking about a $64 million project, then they have to spread those projects throughout the state. And so I think it's trying to be equitable. They did move it forward to appropriations with basically a $9 million price tag on it that would have paid for design. We would still, if it had gone through and been passed with the budget, had to find the additional, basically those funds for construction. We have been successful in the past in 21, I think, actually it was 23, I'm sorry. So in '22, we got money for Latin Copper Rule, Congressman Scott, and then the senators last year for Public Safety Radios, we got $3 million.
But there are like projects being approved?
I haven't seen, sorry, I haven't seen any projects of that magnitude pass by, at least in the ones you see that get passed on to appropriations. You typically see the largest projects you see in maybe the $15 million range, and if they are larger projects, they're done by places out west, like where they're dealing with the core reclamation projects and things of that nature.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Wright, the square footage that we're looking to dedicate to the building, how does that compare to the present square footage that is being used across the different buildings that are being occupied?
I'd have to come back to you with that information, but I can get that for you.
Okay, so how did we come up? Because I'm concerned that much being put into public safety in a city that has the high poverty rates like we do. So how did we come to the determination that that was the amount, size, that we needed for a Public Safety building here in Portsmouth?
So it's basically the result of a programming study. So you look at each individual department within the Police Department, within Fire Administration, all those other components that'll go into the facility, see what their staffing levels are, see what their staffing levels need to be, see what type of working space they have and what they need, look to see whether there are any adjacencies where you can cut space, like share use training, shared conference rooms, and things of that nature. And then each one of those, basically, once you figure out what each group needs, you basically sum it all up and you come up with the area for the building.
So when you speak to staffing levels need to be, how do we determine? For example, we've been saying that we have this high vacancy in the number of police. How have we determined that that is our need?
At the time, I think it was based on the full complement, basically. So if you had your full complement and those folks were employed in those divisions, then that's what those divisions will look like inside of that facility.
Right, so the question becomes, how do you know that that is the full complement that is needed? Where did that number come from?
That information's come from the chiefs.
Okay, so, but we haven't been at those levels. The levels that the need was based on, we haven't been at those levels in this city. There have been vacancies for several years.
Correct, there have been vacancies, but I would say just because there have been vacancies doesn't necessarily mean that you don't need them.
That's my point. How do you know, how do we know that you do need them? And so that's my concern with putting that amount into public safety. The other issue is that I thought that that site was supposed to have been also used for the new middle school that the schools had requested. So where are we with that, with now saying that the Willet Hall site will be used?
So we looked at both sites, so both facilities will fit on both sites. So the Public Safety facility will fit on the preferred site and the site across the street, as well as, I think it's now a K through eight, if I'm not mistaken, will fit on that site and across the street.
Okay, so we've been in communications with the school to let them know that although this is going on to the site that had been discussed, that there's no conflict?
We've let them know, as far as their operations group that I typically deal with, that we've been looking at this site for potential other uses and that the new K through eight school will fit on the adjacent site.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. On the page that you were speaking about funding, has your department reached out to our state legislators for budget amendments? Have you all reached out to our state legislators for budget amendments? I know that the city of Chesapeake, they just received a budget amendment for this year for approximately $9 million for an expansion of their recreation facility. So I know that those type of items could be included in our state budget?
Not for this specific project. We have reached out in the past years for budget amendments. I think this year's budget amendment that we asked for was for the local match to the
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you for the presentation. I had a question about the basketball court in the gym. Was that one basketball court or multiple courts? And if we are talking about putting a court in there, could we possibly expand that to multiple courts so then we can turn this into not just a public safety facility, but a place where we can also use to make money?
I'm not sure the number of courts that were included in the facility, but I'm not sure that if it's inside of the facility, how it's currently laid out, that you'd have that type of public access inside a police station or a public safety facility. So it potentially need to go somewhere else or be a separate part of, not part of the main facility, if that would be the intent.
So what, the basketball court would be for the police and the firefighters to play basketball?
It'd go along with their training.
Oh, okay.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Wright, for the brief. On page four, it says the chiefs were asked back in 2018 to validate the requirement. Has there been conversations?
Is your microphone on, sir?
I'm sorry. Have there been conversations with the chiefs since 2018, when we have new chiefs now?
Yes.
We have a real-time crime center, we have a bunch of new technology coming in. I mean, a lot of things have changed from 2018 until now.
Yeah, it was always the intent for this facility to capture all of those things that we see happening at this moment. A lot of the same individuals that were helped develop the programming for this are still part of both police and fire, and both chiefs have actually seen this presentation and are on board. They've actually seen it a couple of times and are basically on board with the presentation or on board with the facility, I should say.
Okay, well, if I was going to build the Taj Mahal Public Safety, I think I'd be on board, too. Is there a need to have the police and the fire in the same facility? And the reason I'm asking is, this is a big funding challenge to try to swallow, and seems to me that it may be to our benefit to look at separating the efforts, funding a police station or a police department first and doing something with fire second, perhaps in different locations. You know, having everything all in the same place in today's environment isn't necessarily the best thing to do. And so for financial reasons, for safety reasons, I just wonder if incrementalizing the project into at least two pieces, even if we decide to put it all in the same spot, building some of it and then building more of it instead of trying to build everything at once, have we looked at something like that?
Not at the time where we were coming up with original programming due to the fact that this happened prior to a number of events where folks were spread throughout different parts of the city. Some places that weren't necessarily suitable for where they needed to work, where they needed to be, where the public needed to go and see them, and then in other places where we were paying rent, and we still are in some places where we're paying rent. So the thought was to basically get them out of the places where we're paying rent, get them in a suitable spot. And at the time, it was just one facility, one shot, just move everybody that way. You get that part of it done. And the additional part of it, that the parcels that they're in, which are mostly downtown, are potential parcels that could be used for development opportunities as well. So it frees up those parcels for development.
Yeah, I get all that, but two years to design, two years to build, and that's once you get the money. And we're not in a position today to set all that, four years of work totally in motion. So we're going to be paying rent for at least the next four years. And I wonder if incrementally building this thing, design it so that it can be built in pieces, maybe gets you some of it sooner so that we get some of the team out of our distributed spaces and can take advantage of not having them spread all over and paying that rent. On page nine, in the discussion about your engagement with Senators Warner and Kane, it says here that the project cost was reduced to $9 million from apparently $64.5 million. So what were we going to do with $9 million except throw it into the city to try to fund $64.5 million? Was that the plan?
Well, with the $9 million, we did the design. So that round, we submitted five projects. The Public Safety Radios moved on, funded for $3 million. There was a dam project that was, we requested $40 million, that was reduced to $6 or $7 million. There was a project dealing with vacuum sewers that we submitted for $50 million. I think that was reduced to $8 million. So they're trying to spread the money throughout the state. Something's better than nothing, so our take is if they're going to give us something, we'll work with that and look to find other resources to try to fill in those gaps.
Okay, so our project was submitted, was this the only Portsmouth project submitted at the time, or did we have several that we trimmed back and tried to get a whole bunch of funding for a bunch of different stuff?
No, there were five. Every year, we submit multiple projects. We submitted four the one year, five this last year, that we received, $3 million for Public Safety Radios, and we have three or four submitted this year in the current go round.
Okay, so when we submitted this project, was this the number one priority, the number five priority, or somewhere in between?
This was number three. The dams were number one, the sewers were number two, and this was number three.
And did any of our projects get funded?
Public Safety Radios for $3 million.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wright, for the presentation. And looking at the sites that were evaluated, I guess the one that we chose is the most optimal one for all of the Public Safety Departments that are there. I mean, being the Willet Hall site, the one that was chosen was the most optimal out of all of the ones that were listed here?
Yes, ma'am. That was the most centralized, the most compatible site for the use that we were trying to make. And as you can see, we'd also identified that some of the other sites, and now you see that they're currently under development or have other uses, so even if we were to move away, those sites are no longer available, so.
And with the funding amount, I guess the question has already been asked, but the locations that they are now, we're renting, there would be no way to have any cost savings or to move to another platform. I believe all of our ARPA funds may be expended, and any other CIP funding wouldn't be funds that could be used to offset some of the costs in here.
If I'm gathering what you're asking about the rent that we're paying?
Yes, for the fire and the police locations that are situated now.
I think the rent comes out of General Services Operating Budget, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so, okay, so that wouldn't help with this funding, this pot of funds at all, to be able to, because I see it's $75 million for a build-out that's five years from the 2019. So if we don't build this year or next year, another four years, it could potentially go up another $8 million, just for the design?
Right, and where we, you know, as we continue to look at our projects, I'll be coming back to council on the next council meeting, but where we are with unspent funds, unspent dollars for ARPA, and being that the design is about $8 million, if that's something that we want to consider using ARPA dollars for, we could, especially for the design while we're still within the timeline.
Right, and I guess my concern is that the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost, and where are there other options besides going to our senators? Because a few of us went to the National League of Cities and we advocated for some things, but I guess this was already a done deal to not move forward by the time that we had gotten there. Just wanted to know if there was some other muscle that could have been put behind it to try to get some offset funding.
Well, it's hard to find funding for a public facility, specifically a public facility of this magnitude. We've looked at different scenarios where we could maybe fund certain parts of it to basically build a funding do it, say, fund the emergency operations portion, fund the warehouse, or fund some other components inside the building, sort of build your funding to maybe you get $30 million or so, and then you, $30 million is a lot less to come up with, you get the other half. At the time of '64, you could get, you know, $34 million, all you have to come up with. And so we're still looking, but it's difficult, it's a challenge, and so we just continue to plug away at it.
And in the design layout, I know Chief had mentioned at the last presentation that they were in need of a training facility, so is that included in the layout?
And so you see all those things, you see the computer classrooms, the residential simulator, so they can train basically like real-time, real-life incidents, defense tactics training, enforced simulator, and a multipurpose briefing room, so all other spaces, so all the training's incorporated into these facilities for both fire and police.
Okay, because I guess he was saying, like, I guess I was thinking more of academy, they have to send them out of the city to go to academy training, so is that in there?
That's a bigger question, because we do have, we do pay to send our officers or cadets or whatever, what are y'all, recruits? To training, in Newport News, I believe. And so we are looking, that's a whole different, but one of the things that I said we may be able to repurpose 206 High Street for could have something to, we could use it for training, because again, there are several, we have nothing really, we have two places, but I think that we need to look at how can we repurpose the facilities that we have, that we own, and expand. So I don't know if that answered the question.
That is, because I did hear the question that they needed their own training academy, and I just wondered if it was inside of there or if it needed to be a separate facility. Okay, all right, thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, that was the issue that I was curious about, that Chief Jenkins did raise, that so if I'm hearing you correctly, this will accommodate the police academy?
With police academy, that's something that we're going to have to bring back to council as an entire situation, because we do pay to send our recruits to the police academy, and we were, we're in a contract. And at some point, we were going to have to come back to council to see how we want to move forward, whether we want to bring our training academy here so we won't lose so many recruits to other localities, because again, they're in a pot where everybody sees the brightest and the best, and they want them. And we lose our recruits during that process. So if we bring it in-house, we are more subject to be able to have them hands-on, learn Portsmouth dynamics, and be able to train and keep. Not sure if that answered your question, but...
So the facility that's being proposed that would accommodate a police academy?
Yes.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
So for the warehouse, for the warehouse that is being proposed, it mentions vehicle bays and storage space, as well as utility space. Is that duplicating what we already have at the city compound? So the vehicle bays, would these vehicle bays be for repairs to the cars or just to store them?
Storage, so the command bus, several other pieces of large fire apparatus, property and evidence and things of that nature. And so you have a number of different types of storage that they need, and this warehouse will accommodate all those types of storage. You have some equipment that shouldn't necessarily be outside the entire time that you own it, and it's still outside, and so that accommodates getting those undercover, provides a permanent home for the command bus and other apparatuses they have.
Okay, so all the maintenance of vehicles will still be at the Frederick Boulevard location?
Yeah, there's no maintenance at this facility. It's just, like I said, apparatus and storage.
Madam City Manager, did you want the floor, ma'am? Okay, I do have a couple of questions, sir. First of all, when you visit, when you all visited other facilities, public safety facilities, did they have the model that you're thinking about putting in place, meaning fire and police in the same building? Did any of those places have that model?
I can't speak to that. I wasn't part of that tour. It was just the public safety folks and the consultant that went on those tours. I'd have to get back to you if that answers that question.
That's fine. And assuming that we build... And assuming that we build something like this in whatever timeframe it takes, generally, what is the life expectancy of a public facility like this?
Most municipal buildings are buildings of any kind. The lifespan is fifty years. If you do some things during that time, you can extend that life, so you're saying fifty plus or minus.
And one of the things I recall the chief indicating was that not having a facility is very problematic in a lot of ways, and you just indicated a police station or a public safety building has to have certain parts of it that are unique to that type of facility, right? Like storage facilities, evidence rooms, certain things have to be there. The reason why I'm asking the question is because I really think that what you have indicated and what the chief indicated, and I've heard my colleagues, how long has it been since we've had a public safety facility for, like, a centralized facility where our people could go and get these types of amenities?
I don't necessarily know if we've ever had a facility where they could get these type of amenities. We've had space where people have all been in the same spot before, that'd be the complex across the street, but the actually amenities they would need to perform, do their job probably to the maximum they could, I don't think we've ever had a facility. That speaks to that.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Next up would be, I will be presenting, we're going to talk about budget as it relates to personal property tax relief. Mr. Trey Burke, the budget officer, will, where are you? Will present real estate relief and some additional budgetary items, and then we will have the interim city assessor to bring in the, to give some information. Thank you. If it pleases council, I would like to present from the podium up there. Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and members of Portsmouth City Council, along with Portsmouth family. What I wanted to do today is present some information from the proposed budget to give you some information as we discussed in a previous council member as it relates to personal property tax. I wanted to give you some background information, so everybody is aware of how we calculate personal property tax and the impact it has on the budget. So this year, we're proposing a one-time fifty percent tax relief reduction for qualified personal property, which would be your car, your vehicles. What is Virginia Personal Property Tax Relief? A lot of times, you will hear me say PPTRA. PPTRA is your Virginia Personal Property Tax Relief Act. This is a relief that provides relief to qualifying passenger cars, motorcycles, pickups, panel trucks, having a registered gross weight with DMV of ten thousand pounds or less, and it becomes effective in your calendar year of January one. The vehicles that are excluded from Personal Property Tax Relief Act are business and commercial use. And the reason those are excluded is because you, as a business owner, actually has the authority, well, not authority, but you can actually write down some of your expenses as it relates to your car for business purposes when you file your taxes as a business. You get a depreciation expense reduction, you get standard mileage reduction, you can reduce your insurance, you can reduce your mileage. So you have a lot of initiatives that will allow you to write your car down in your business. So they consider it maybe what we can say double-dipping, because you're getting the benefit of both, so they want you to exclude that from the relief act. Vehicles that are ineligible, again, for personal property tax relief are bid for assets or vehicles associated with, for business purposes. Those include recreation, including RVs, ATVs, and other off-road vehicles, and mopeds. So I wanted to walk you through actual assessed vehicle value under twenty thousand dollars. And there is a purpose, but we're going to go through it so that we can get a full understanding of how to calculate your assessment and your tax associated. So for example, this example is a vehicle under twenty thousand dollars. You have a hundred percent value, which in 2023, this is actually one for 2023, eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Your tax rate is five dollars for every one hundred dollars. That's your multiplier, minus your PPTRA, Personal Property Tax Relief Act, on the first twenty thousand dollars. So that's any car under twenty thousand dollars will benefit from the Personal Property Tax Relief Act, and this year, we're proposing it be fifty percent, which means your car is eleven thousand, two seventy-five. Your rate is the multiplier, eleven, two seventy-five, times five divided by a hundred, and that's five hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Fifty percent off of the first twenty thousand, because this car is under twenty thousand dollars, leaves you with two hundred and eighty-eight, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. So your bill is five sixty-three. With the relief act, you pay two hundred and eighty-one or two hundred and eighty-two dollars. The thing that I want you all to note is whatever you give in a relief, the city absorbs the difference, and we just remember that, and we'll come back to it. So here is an assessment for a car over twenty thousand dollars. Let's say the car is, and this, twenty-three, fiscal calendar year twenty-three, sixty-one thousand, four sixty-three is the price of the vehicle, or the value of the vehicle. The tax on the assessed value is three thousand, seventy-four dollars. PPTRA discount, and we're going to call it the discount, because it's off the first twenty thousand dollars. So you're going to assess your vehicle for the entire amount. Then you go to the side and say, what is the percentage I would get off of the first twenty thousand dollars? So that would be a thousand dollars, based on the calculation. You receive whatever percentage, if it's fifty percent, you're going to get half of that, which is five hundred dollars. Now, you go back to your three seventy-four, which was your original tax. You reduce it by the five hundred dollars, and now amount due to the city is two thousand, five seventy-four. What I didn't include is the license fee, because that's based on the heavy or how your vehicle is identified. Normally, it's thirty-seven dollars per vehicle. Remember, we used to get the little stickers, but that's included, you know. So the city absorbs the other fifty, I mean, the other five hundred dollars, because remember, your discount, your PPTRA or your tax was a thousand dollars. You're getting half of that in a credit, and then the other five hundred, the city really absorbs that. So let me break it down. This is a vehicle, and when we look at the value of the vehicle, let's start with this. In 2020, your vehicle was twelve thousand, two twenty-five. In 2021, it was thirteen, six hundred, so you might, it may have gone up. Those years, we gave a fifty-three percent PPTRA. In 22, remember, used vehicles skyrocketed in value. So in 2022, that same vehicle, so we chased it, that same vehicle's value went up to sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Last year, we gave a twenty-five percent one-time ratio on top of a forty-five percent PPTRA discount. And so giving that ratio put us right in line with twelve thousand, three hundred dollars, which has been the average cost or the value of that same vehicle. Now, 2023, the value of that vehicle has now dropped to eleven thousand, two seventy-five. It was sixteen thousand real-time last year. This year, it's eleven, two seventy-five, which is consistent with the price of your vehicle depreciating over time. So this year, the proposal, last year was forty-five percent PPTRA. This year, we're proposing, or we've budgeted for fifty percent. And the reason we looked at what that same vehicle would be for the taxpayers or for the citizens with their vehicles under twenty thousand dollars, you could definitely see you're still going to be paying less. Now, remember, any time that we supplement or give reductions, it takes from our bottom line. The proposed tax relief for eligible vehicles at fifty percent, it is going to cost the city fourteen million dollars. The state provides the allocation of nine point eight million dollars. No matter what, the state pays that same amount. It doesn't go up, it doesn't, well, it could possibly go down, but it's been the same over probably the last six, seven, ten years, since it started, years, years, years ago. So no matter what, your amount will be received from the state of nine point eight. No matter how many more vehicles you get, no matter how many more people move to the city and everybody buys a car, you're going to get nine point eight million. The city is absorbing four point two million dollars for eligible relief. So you're, the cost of fifty percent to give PPTRA cost the city fourteen million. The state is only going to give you nine point eight. You're, the eligible vehicles is going to cost the city two point two, four point two million to cover the cost. Vehicle count, what I wanted to do is show you how many vehicles are actually in that range of under twenty thousand dollars, so that you could actually see how many of the citizens will benefit from that PPTRA. So vehicles that range less than ten thousand dollars are fifty-eight thousand vehicles. Assessments that range from ten thousand, one to twenty thousand dollars, fifteen thousand, four forty-five vehicles. So those vehicles get the bulk of the PPTRA, and they're the citizens that receive the Over twenty thousand to sixty thousand dollars, there are nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven vehicles in the city in that range. Costs to be the boss. The range of sixty-plus is a hundred and seventeen. So what we really wanted to do is capture the vehicles that would benefit and relieve our citizens, where our citizens would receive the most relief, which citizens, the range of citizens. So eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two total vehicles. Seven hundred and two million is the total assessment value of all the properties. So what we did, I think Councilman Moody asked the average, I think it's like eight thousand, three ninety-two or something like that off the top. So it's just showing the vehicle count, how many of the vehicles and what, as a pie chart, you can see who has the bulk of the cars less than ten thousand. Just a chart to kind of see what the last slide showed. Now, that's my portion for Personal Property Tax Relief Act, and then we're going to get into tax real estate, but I wanted to answer any of your questions associated with personal property tax relief. I tried to make it and spread it just so it would be clean and easier to explain, but I thought it was a good idea for you to see who would be impacted, and the fifty percent would definitely bring a lot of relief to our citizens. Okay, what, look at God. Mr. Burke? Come on. And what I also wanted to say before we get started, as far as the proposed real estate tax relief one-time credit, I'm working with legal on the verbiage, so we did talk and said that it is possible to do it this way. I'm just putting that in front of you now, because that way, we want to err on the side of caution for conservatism, but I want to be able to give the citizens a relief, but be able to ensure that we are fiscally responsible as well. And I'll be over here if you need me.
Ma'am, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke has a question for you.
Just one question. See? No, it's okay. I pushed the reset. But the one-time credit that they get is one-time in life or one-time every year?
Oh, every year, you vote on it. Every year, we work with the commissioner and come up. So what we do, we go through the numbers, we go through the cards, because every year it changes. So every year, it's a one-time credit, because it's on a calendar year. So that's why you see, you buy a car in January. We have where we pay one time, so the payment is due in June. You have supplemental bills that will still get that. We just don't, we don't leave anybody out.
Okay, that's what I was, yeah.
Mr. Burke, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, interim city manager Mimi Terry, and good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and members of city council. This evening, I will be reviewing real property tax revenues and other rate, excuse me, and other rate and fee changes proposed in the fiscal year 2024 budget. Real property taxes, commonly referred to as the real estate tax, is the city's single largest source of revenue. It's supporting forty-two percent of all general fund expenditures. Real property includes the land and any permanently installed improvements on the land. The city assessor determines the fair market value of the property and the city taxes real property at a rate adopted by city council. This chart shows how real estate tax bills for the median homeowner increase by locality. Real property taxes grew throughout the tidewater, with a robust seven percent increase being the slowest assessment growth in the region. Assuming the most recent reliable data, the median homeowner in each locality would see their tax bill grow by between two hundred and thirteen and three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This citizen in Portsmouth's bill will grow by three hundred and thirty-three dollars. But also keep in mind that the median home value reflects 2021, because it's the most recent reliable data we have. The increase is likely understated on this chart. The first rule of making a PowerPoint is not to put a whole sentence on the slide, but I think this point cannot be made clear enough. Lowering the real estate tax will reduce current year expenditures. The budget can absorb decreases at the cost of the bottom line and future year capital projects. Also consider that the citywide reassessment is ongoing. Any discussion of revenues is based on the assessment presented to city council in February. If you will allow me to skip ahead to slide sixteen for a discussion of revenue generation before we go back to the impact on individual tax bills. The penny on the tax rate is a shorthand for the amount of revenue generated by each penny on the real property tax rate. The revenue generating value of each penny on the tax rate is directly related to the assessed taxable value of property in the city. The assessment presented to city council in February projects roughly one million dollars of revenue for each penny on the tax rate. For fiscal year 2024, this is a straightforward calculation. One cent equals one million dollars. Two cents equals two million dollars, so on and so forth. I'm now going to return to slide fourteen. This chart shows the tax bill for each of the assessed property values. A home assessed at the median value would pay two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. A home assessed at the dollar twenty-seven tax rate would be charged two thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. At a dollar twenty-six, it would be two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one, and at a dollar twenty-five, it would be two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine. Citizens can quickly calculate or guesstimate their tax bill by multiplying the value of their property by the tax rate and then dividing by one hundred. This chart shows a net adjustment to a tax bill at each of the. at each of the above housing values and tax rates. Keep in mind that a reassessment may lower your property's assessed value, lowering the amount of tax credit, but that will overall lower your tax bill. This budget also includes, excuse me, this budget also proposes changes to usage rates for water and sewer, stormwater fees, fines for parking infractions, museum admissions, and update some select sections for casino mixed beverage licenses to comply with state law. In fiscal year 2018, City Council began to consider 5% annual usage rate increases for water and sewer under the Department of Public Utilities. In fiscal year 2024, we are proposing a 32-cent increase to $5.19 per cubic feet of water and a 25-cent increase to $4.08 per 100 cubic feet of wastewater. Some considerations for these rate and fee adjustments. They promote long-term financial planning for the department. They continue operational best practices and help the department stay ahead of current and future regulatory requirements. Similarly, for the stormwater management utility, this budget proposes a 75-cent increases to the equivalent residential unit monthly charges for residential commercials, consumers. This rate increase will allow the city to comply with its Virginia Stormwater Management, excuse me, Virginia Stormwater Management Program Permit. It will mitigate flooding caused by sea level rise and design and construct more flood mitigation infrastructure projects. These increases will enable the city to keep up with evolving and growing capital needs of our water distribution, wastewater collection, and waste, and stormwater management systems. They will also allow us to reduce the size of future debt issuances and improve existing debt coverage. A number of parking fines proposed to double. All of the fee changes are parking fines with the exception of implementing a fine for exceeding the speed limit by more than 10 miles an hour within a school zone. And here at the bottom, you can actually see the speeding infraction. I'm going from $0 to $100. Museums has proposed some fee changes to eliminate the defunct key pass program, a slight increase to fees for admission with the focus and planetarium programs, and a fee restructuring for children at the Naval Shipyard Museum and Lightship Museum. Notice that there is a mistake on this slide related to those figures. To read is follows. The age for free admission to the museum has been proposed to increase from two to four. So if you're under five years old, you won't pay to get in at the museum. All other museum pages would now pay $3. These changes will have a minimal budgetary impact, but will better align fees across all museums. These presented changes to mixed beverage licenses are responsive to new authority granted by the General Assembly. And then, under previous legislation, all mixed beverages served under, served in a casino will be served under one overall mixed beverage license, purchased for $800 plus $2 for each gaming station. The new legislation would allow the city to require licensing for each casino-operated restaurant serving mixed beverages depending on their seating capacity in addition to the casino's overall beverage license. I appreciate your time and attention, and I'm available to answer any questions or comments from City Council.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, thank you for the presentation on page, on page 12. Because that's, that's the big issue that we've been hearing a lot about in regards to the real estate rate. More of a comment before the question. We get a lot of commentary in the news from citizens as far as Portsmouth having the highest tax rate. But what this shows and what we have always stated is that this is based on two components, what you pay, the tax rate and the value of the home. And so when citizens and when the newspaper keeps publicizing the highest tax rate, they're really doing a disservice and misinformation because they do not talk about home values, which you have outlined here for us. And so this median home value, that this term you use up here, median, are you referring to a statistical median or average?
It's the statistical median. So half of the houses in Portsmouth are valued lower than, excuse me, $221,500, and half of them are valued above that number.
Okay, okay. Reason I was asking, because the pie chart that you presented on page 10 in regards to the personal property taxes and the number of the vehicles that are impacted, I, I thought that might would be good to see what percentage of homes fall within these different ranges to see who's actually being impacted. But you're saying this is a pure median.
Yes.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was finished, but I, something, but, but it would still be good to see the percentage of houses that fall within the different ranges, like you did on, on this pie chart for the personal property.
As in the number of houses?
Right. Yeah. Yeah, because I thought that the pie chart gives us a good indication of the impact.
Right. And we could come back to that, but because we get the, of the city assessor, interim city assessor will be providing some additional information after we're, we've kind of wrapped this portion up. And she may be able to answer that for you or be able to send a report back.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Mr. Burke, for the presentation. I guess on the page where you made the long sentence that reducing the tax rate will reduce the revenues, so was the following pages to help make up the loss in revenues with the other increased taxes? And how close did we get to the loss?
I think the intention of the penny on the tax rate slide up is what you're referring to. It was just to quantify so that we have an understanding of how much we're reducing the revenues in the city by, as we reduce the tax rate.
Right. So, but the, the revenues that were lost, I guess, how much we lost based on how much we increasing the other fees? Do we know what that looks like? If we lost $100,000 and we raise the fees by $50,000, how much is the difference in what we're, would lose if we would reduce the tax rate? Based on the increases in the fees?
Right. So if you reduce the tax rate by three cents, that'd be 3 million, 4 million, 5 million. We would probably have to look at it on an individual, individual basis. None of the fees that we're proposing this year, with the exception of water and sewer and stormwater, which are bulk, which go to other funds, have a substantial budgetary impact. So the, the museums, we don't, we didn't do that to, to raise revenue. We just did it for consistency. And there's only one casino in Portsmouth. You know, it's, so, so it's only, you know, relatively low amount of revenue. So I don't know that any of those revenue would offset meaningfully any reductions to the real estate tax rate. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes. I thought we was just trying to make up a difference with, okay.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. You know, there's been some general conversation on reducing the tax rate by nickel, which obviously that corresponds to $5 million. So I would like to see the, the manager come back with where that would come from, whether it's, whether it's reducing it by five cents, whether it's reducing it by six cents. And I think that's, that's what we need to see. You know, council, council sets the tax rate. We have nothing to do with the assessment rate. So, you know, Portsmouth's been $1.30 for a number of years. And I don't have to go into the litany of the financial stress that our citizens are under. And it's easy to say, well, in a $221,000 house, that's not going to make a whole lot of difference. But 100 here, 100 there, especially when you're talking about the increase in utilities, that adds up for a family, especially if a family that's on a fixed income. So I think that would be good information for us to look at. Where, where will that come from? And, and I would like to see that before we make a decision. Matter of fact, we, I think it's germane for us to see that before we decide on what we'll do.
Right. What we can do is bring that when we come to the retreat, council retreat is this week. It is Friday and Saturday. But one thing I do want to make mention is that's why we are looking at it as a one-time credit. Because again, we are dealing with the impact of our assessments being adjusted. Again, it does affect the bottom line. So we felt that it would air, for us to err on the more conservative side was to provide a credit to give our citizens relief in these specific areas, especially in real estate. By, within the next 12 months, we will have a full handle on where we are in city assessments. But again, it gives them the relief now that they're looking for. And once we get all of these things that we can determine what really the impact of revenue is based on the decrease of the assessments and we are pretty much stabilized, then we can determine if we really want to commit to the $1.25 or $1.26 or a dollar in, you know, 29. But it gives us the opportunity to see where the revenues will actually be and where we will be stable. Because right now, we're kind of...
I, I don't follow the one-time. In my way, I think, and the tax rate is always a, a one-time deal because it's a, it's an annual decision that council has to make. So can you explain?
Absolutely.
Your, your definition and mine of one-time are two different things.
Okay. So let's put it in generalization of a credit. This year, of course, our real estate tax is $1.30. We would give us five-cent credit on the rate this year to ensure that it is reflective in what the taxpayers are paying on their real estate tax bills. So what we're requesting is a five-cent rate reduction. So now, the current rate that they would pay in 2024 would be $1.25. That would give us enough time to look at the assessments, ensure that they are stable, and see what additional revenue that we have. Because right now, we have revenue coming in, but it's a first time. We can't do long-term decisions on a first time uncertain because we don't have a pattern. So in order to relieve our citizens, we looked at where we could actually reduce and give them some relief. So instead of me saying one time, I'll say a credit to the rate of five cents. That makes, is that more consistent? Okay. So a credit to the rate of five cents, that would take the rate down to $1.25. And again, we're constant, we're still in an ongoing reassessment. We have people coming in every day. I think this week, Janie, I mean, I'm sorry, interim city assessor, it was, I'm sorry, it was, um, 7 million this week, or the day? Again, we're constantly looking and doing some reassessments, even with the commercial property. So I just didn't want us to commit to something that we can't adjust later. So why, this is exactly why I wanted to consider a credit to relieve the taxpayers so that we can get a handle on our assessments, which would assist us in determining a future rate.
No, thanks, thanks for the explanation. Yes, I understand that.
And again, we can come back with any additional. What I, what I would challenge council to do, anything associated with the budget, since we are going to have our council retreat, we can discuss that. We have time blocked out for the retreat for budget. I've received some questions, and I thought they were good questions, but I think everybody on council may have the same questions. So I figured if we could just compile them together, and then we all are learning and getting that same information at once. And then you're going to have additional questions. We want to be available and make sure we answer those questions for you.
So that includes requests?
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I didn't see the beat.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Madam C. Attorney, I mean, Madam C. Manager, sorry. Madam C. Manager, Budget Director, thanks for this brief. Appreciate the insight. Acknowledging Councilman Whitaker's comment that the important numbers on slide 12 are the estimated tax bill and the fact that the median home in Portsmouth creates a lower tax bill than the median home in any other city. While that's interesting, the thing that gets advertised is the tax rate. And so when somebody moves in from out of town and they're looking for a home, they see Portsmouth homes and say, well, here's an affordable place to live. And the first thing that they get told is, ah, but watch out for that tax rate. It's the highest in Hampton Roads. And so while I appreciate your effort to, to wave your hands on a credit, I think it's time to lower the tax rate down to a buck 25. And to Councilman Moody's point, I think going into the retreat, we need some understanding on, on what gets squeezed out of the budget. That $5 million, that's kind of at the, the bottom of the, of the list so that we can make some, some informed choices.
Yeah. One, one of the things that we were talking about doing, but I'm, I'm not sure if I'll have time for Thursday, for Friday or Saturday, but we'll try to work it out. What people also don't understand is that you can purchase a house, your same home that you purchased in Portsmouth, you pick that home up and you take that home to Virginia Beach. It has probably, the probability of that home doubling in value. So although our tax rate may reflect the $1.30, your assessment, if you move that same home to another locality, will double in price. So what I think we're going to try to do, if we can figure out, we'll follow a house with the same comps and say, hey, this is a three-bedroom house, 1,200 square feet, a yard and a lot size of this. What does it cost in Portsmouth? Take that same comprehensive analysis and pull that house and say, in Virginia Beach, this house, this size, this lot, this amount. What is the value of that home in Virginia Beach? And so you can see side by side what that really looks like as it relates to our tax rate, the value of the property, and what you're actually seeing. I think that would be a great observation for just not council, but for our citizens of Portsmouth who do say, oh, it's the highest tax rate. But we are lower in a lot of other rates that we charge our citizens as well.
There is a better way to tell the story than we're telling it right now. But unfortunately, we don't control all of the storytelling. And so tax rate is tax rate, and, and even by our own chart, we stick out like a sore thumb.
Yeah, we, we get beat down by public opinion. But it's nice when we show facts, just like a comparison we, I was able to send this week for some things that people were saying we were extremely high on and that clearly was incorrect. But again, I think these are some great opportunities to educate the public on what Portsmouth really has to offer.
Thank you, ma'am. And I would like to add, I think I shared this with the citizens and my colleagues on council, Realtor.com has voted Portsmouth, Virginia as the number one city in America for first-time home buyers. I think that's a good story as well. So wanted to leave on a positive note.
Okay. And interim city assessor?
Hold on, I, I do have a speaker. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the comments, Ms. Terry, you're making about the value. And I think we have to be very careful about not making a budget based on public misinformation and, and fear. I, I think that what you have presented here, and it's not the first time you've presented it as far as these values are concerned, that it, it shows the reality really of what we're facing. And so my concern with the decrease because the decrease has been vocalized based on misinformation as far as just focusing on tax rate. My concern, again, in a city with a high poverty rate like we have, when you start talking about cutting out $5 million from the budget, where is that coming from? What pro, our program's going to be impacted? I think that's something we have to take into account seriously. I'm not a Tea Party member, so the tax issue is not my concern. I think we, we need to make... I think we, we need to make sure that we are providing services needed in our city, and that those who have issues with taxes anyway, that that's not what our decision basis is based on. It's based on truth and providing for our citizens. And so I thank you for the information on the value. Now, whether people, you, you said that they can take that same information and compare it to other localities, which I'm quite sure they do. And so the question becomes, why is it that this misinformation continues to be put out to the public? And we have no control over that, but we do know what the facts are.
Yes, and just as a reminder, the second portion of our... Council meeting, right. I went blank. So the second portion of our council meeting is going to include the PPTRA ordinance because there is a book that they have to produce in order to get the bills out. And so that is going to come with the second portion. Again, the regular real estate reduction, that, we have time because that gets adopted. But I hope, and we will work on ensuring that we're all clear on what we're doing, why we're doing, and what service may suffer, or how addition, how these funds can be divided where we can absorb that rate for a credit. And then we can make further discussion.
So, so it's, it's really a play on words. It's still going to be a dollar 30, it's just that you're giving a credit.
Yes.
Right.
And that gives us more time to determine where we need to go.
Okay.
Councilman Moody, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. In the past, we had a chart that showed the overall tax burden. You know, property tax is just one of the factors. But I think that would be good. And when we're talking about a comparison, a more accurate picture of what the average nuclear family in Portsmouth pays in overall tax burden, I think that would be useful.
Okay. All right.
It wouldn't be for this weekend, it would be for the next council meeting?
Yes, yes.
Because I think it included restaurants, admissions, a bunch of stuff, all of it online.
Waters, sewer, the whole Bailey Wick. Maybe if we could have that at the retreat?
We'll do it for the next council meeting? That'd give us time because the retreat is Friday.
Yeah, that's true. That'd be good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Interim city assessor, Ms. Janie Culpepper.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, madam city manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm here this evening to share with y'all how to navigate through the reassessment adjustments, which we have been making since I came here. So I'm going to try to keep it short and sweet, and as simple as possible. The total reassessment changes to date, which to date actually means Friday, the 7th of this month, we had made 1,000 total parcel adjustments, 972 total residential parcel adjustments, 28 total commercial parcel adjustments, for 1,800, 182,790,645 dollars, which is a 1.83 change. And this affected 55 neighborhood adjustments. So the total reassessment changes to date are residential. The original total proposed assessment was 8 billion plus. A total proposed assessments are down to 7.1 billion. So the, what we've adjusted to date is 886,438,894, which is 11.6 percent. Commercially, we started out at 2.8 billion. Our new proposed assessments are 2.6 billion, with the adjustment of 156,858,633, for a percentage change of 5.5 percent. As you go through, you'll see that we've put down neighborhood changes. This is a little bit misleading because a lot of the neighborhoods are going, are in the process of being changed. We are changing land adjustments as I speak now. We're having a fairly large meeting tomorrow to address the neighborhoods that we can address at this particular point in time, and make those changes. We have changes coming in every day. I have hundreds that came in Friday. I have hundreds that have come in today. I have hundreds of telephone calls. And we are reviewing as quickly as we can. And we're serving the citizens of the city of Portsmouth. So the proposed assessment adjustment, and this is, once again, is of, is as of Friday, the 7th, with a difference from the original assessment that was presented to council of 182,790,645, which is 1.83 percent. So we are steadily making the adjustments as needed. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Culpepper, for the presentation. So the adjustments are for the people who just come into your office? Or is it going to be for everyone, whether they come or not?
Well, that's kind of a double-blind question. So what, what's happening is, as the people come in to us or call us about their assessment, we don't look just at their residence. We look at the entire neighborhood. So when we start looking at the neighborhood and we notice something, we look at the entire neighborhood then, not just at one assessment. So what's happening right now, some of the people that came in, they had two complaints. They were complaining about the value of their building, but most often, it's the value of the land. So what we were doing immediately was adjusting the residence or the building, sending out a revised notice, and letting them know that we would be taking a much closer look at the land, and the way the land increases were done. And that's what we're doing. Another problem area that we had was townhouses and condominiums. And that has really been a problem. One of the biggest problems with those is that, in a lot of the neighborhoods, especially our older neighborhoods, there are individual condominiums that may only have 10 or 15 in each one, or some a little bit more. So the code for condominiums was removed. And so what happened was that not only did the condominiums and townhouses get the rate increase of the residential land, but they, in addition to that, they also added an increase of the land for condominiums and townhouses, which in many cases was close to 200 percent. So we have made some changes on these. We have a stack of them that we'll be going through tomorrow. It just takes time. I have a shortage of staff, which is another problem. And we're about to work IT to death. And I, I want to give a shout out to Donna Poole. We could not do these figures without her. She's absolutely fantastic. And she updates as often as I ask her to do. And it's, it's a difficult, difficult job. But we're doing the best that we can, and we're trying to touch everybody. We have our, next hearings will be coming up for the Board of Equalization. The board members will be in our office Thursday. We will be setting the dates and the times for the Board of Equalization. We will be advertising in the paper as well as online. And the way that works is they fill out a form. Many of them that missed the hearings, or thought they missed the hearings, we look at them before they ever go to the board. So we have an opportunity to look at the ones that weren't able to come in during the regular hearing period. So we will go ahead and make the changes. We'll contact the owners and see how the owner feels about the, the change that we've made. If they're still dissatisfied, then of course, they have the right to go to the Board of Equalization.
And what's the timeframe for people who want to come in for the hearing, I mean, before the hearing?
Well, we have not set those dates yet. That is actually set by the board members themselves. And it has to be in conjunction with the city clerk's office, because we use their conference room. So we check with them, and we tried to, we encourage them to do them on different days, different times of the week, so that everybody will have an opportunity to do that. And this year is one of the years that unfortunately, in the past, what we had done is we had actually had some evenings where people could come in for their hearings. Because it's very difficult, and a lot of families, this day and time, you have two members that work, both the husband and the wife. So in the past, what we've done is a couple of nights a week, we would have a few hours, maybe on Tuesday or Thursday nights, where they could come in and actually make their presentations at that time. Unfortunately, it didn't happen this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes, sir.
You answered part of the question.
Yes, sir.
And that is, the process does involve the Board of Equalization.
Yes, sir.
And so what you're doing now, that's in lieu of the Board of Equalization. And if I heard you correctly, if persons are satisfied with what your office has done, then they do not go through the Board of Equalization process.
If they're satisfied, they, it's not necessary to go to the board. If they're unsatisfied, they may certainly go to the board. And we encourage them to do so.
Right. And in the, in the past, because citizens have been complaining about taxes and paying taxes for, for years, the Board of Equalization process, in the past, what percentage change has usually occurred through that process? And you may not know what the top...
Dr. Whitaker, it's difficult to say. The only thing that I can address is when I was here before, before I retired. And as you and several other members here know, we had very, very few hearings, and we had very few people going to the Board of Equalization.
Well, I don't know that, I didn't know that.
Most of, most of the hearings that took place with the board in the past have been commercial properties. And a lot of that was caused because in August or September, we sent out a letter to all commercial property owners, and we asked for income and expense statements. And this is what we use to come up with their assessments. If they do not, if they don't furnish us actual statements, then, then our commercial assessor has to go online and see what the current rates are. So what has happened this year, I'll give you a prime example. This year, the same thing happened. They did not send in. I doubt that we had 5% of the commercial people sent back in. So the assessments came out, and they were standing on their heads. Now they have started sending in their income and expense statements. And we are in the process of rolling out corrected commercial. And the next time that you hear from me, and I give you the changes in the commercial, you'll see quite a bit of difference in what I presented tonight. It's just we haven't had the opportunity to do them yet.
Okay. And you mentioned that the problem occurred because there was a code that was not correctly inputted for the condominiums?
That's in some of them, yes. That, that's in some of. We had a lot of things that were, we had in a lot of the areas, the, the land depreciations that had been on the land for a number of years had been removed. I'll give you a prime example. This is a real easy one. This is on Carrington Crescent and Cavalier Manor. We had 41 homes that back up directly to a railroad crossing, a large, well-used railroad crossing. We had placed a depreciation on this because it greatly affected the value of the land. Well, these were removed. So when you add 15 or 20 percent to land value, plus the increase, other increase that was added, then yes, sir, their land values are going to go up. So these are the, we've already corrected these 41, and we're, we're going to be looking at Cavalier Manor again, along with some other areas. Some of the other areas that we had a really difficult problem in was some of our older areas. We had homes in there that were, that are over 100 years old. Some of them in good condition, some of them in very poor condition. The depreciations were changed. You can't take a 100-year-old house in fair condition and put a 25 percent physical depreciation on it. That, that's not realistic at all. So the appraisers have got to go out and take a look at the property, and look at the land, and see what's happened, especially in some of our very old neighborhoods. A lot of these neighborhoods have been infiltrated with commercial properties and small businesses and so forth. And this has a large effect on these residential properties. And you can't do a blanket, you just can't take a blanket percentage and add it to the land in the city of Portsmouth. Each neighborhood has got to be looked at individually.
So how, so the question becomes, how did, how did that occur?
Well, I will tell you how it occurred, if you'll give me one minute here. I was extremely curious myself of how this took place. I was very distressed over the amount of increase in the land. So I started asking questions of the staff that was there. And I was told that two appraisers had done all the residential land, and one, and the deputy assessor had done the commercial land. And they had been instructed, citywide, on land that was $10,000 to $50,000, to add 25 percent. $50,000 to $100,000, 20 percent. $100,000 to $150,000, 15 percent. $150,000 to $200,000, 10 percent. $200,000 to $250,000, 5 percent. $250,01 to $300,000, 2.5 percent. Waterfront and 300 were to increase 1 percent, with all the depreciations taken off. So this is what happened. I have this statement from the appraiser that did it. And I also have this from Donna Poole, where she received instructions to do this.
So that was done without investigation? It was just a blanket?
Well, what happens, Dr. Whitaker, is, and I'm sure, as you noted, I know you have read the code.
No, I don't know, I don't know what you're talking about.
The state code says that reassessment is to be based on valid sales. Okay. When you don't have sales, what you're supposed to do is, you can do what's called an allocation. You do a neighborhood allocation. So you go into the neighborhood, and you find the value of the land. Say, you and vice mayor live next door to each other. Your land is $350,000 an acre, and hers is $210,000 an acre. That's not right. There's a problem there. So you have to go in with no sales, and you go, and you allocate. You find out what is the average price of the land within that particular neighborhood. And there's a formula that you use. And you follow the formula, and you come up with a percentage of how much of the land should be to the, to the value of the house. Normally, in most instances, it runs 20 to 25 percent total value is the land. It doesn't always work that way. But as a general rule of thumb, and you talk to any appraiser, they're going to say, well, generally speaking, the land is going to be 20 to 25 percent of the total value of the property. But, and when you go in, and you're close to this, and you add an additional 20 percent, or you add 25 percent, your, your land is going to go up expeditiously. We have land that's gone up over 200 percent. And we can't have that. That is not fair and equitable, not to mention the code, but it's not fair and equitable for our citizens. I, I don't think anybody wants their land to go up that much, but it has.
Right. So if I'm hearing you correctly, the persons within the office, the reasons why we saw these increases because they were following a directive from the assessor?
They were following a directive from someone, let me put that. I'm not here to...
No, 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 I'm not trying to cast blame. I'm just, well, the reason I'm asking it is so it won't occur again.
Yes, sir.
So that we know what was going, if it's a code that was changed, how was that code changed? Who changed the code? If persons who are in appraisal positions are going out, is it a unilateral decision? Who, who is directing it so that we don't have these same issues come up again?
The way that it should be done is the reassessment. We get printouts of every single solitary neighborhood in the city of Portsmouth. The printouts give us all the information that we need. It tells us sales. There should be sales meetings once a month to see what has happened with the sales. And you, if you look at these, and you plainly see... And if you look at these and you plainly see that the acreage price is all over the place, then you should know immediately that something needs to be done to address this, so that everybody is assessed fair and equitably.
So, who's assessing it? I guess that's, who's doing the checking balances there? And is that why?
The assessor is responsible for the reassessment.
Okay. And so, when it comes to the CAMA system that we've been discussing so much, is this where this CAMA system should have caught things such as this?
The new CAMA system would help, because the assessor's office can run their own reports. And it's not necessary to go to IT to do that. But IT runs the assessments based on the information that has been given to them throughout the year. The assessments, every neighborhood has a report. We have a report on residential and commercial. And that gives the information that's needed. And it's up to whomever is in charge to make sure that the personnel are following rules and regulations to make certain that things are done properly. And that's all I can say, you know?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Ms. Culpepper, I just want to thank you and your staff for the work that you all are doing. I've had a couple of citizens that have come to me about going to your office, and they have been well-assisted.
Thank you.
And they've been provided not only good customer service, but also they're left with knowledge. And I think that you're delivering that to council as well, so thank you.
Thank you. We're trying very hard to educate the citizens. They need to understand what the process is and how it's done, so that if they need to address something, they'll know how to address it and who to go to to address it.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thanks to your team for all this hard work.
Thank you.
At some point, we have to snap the chalk line, though, for this coming fiscal year. When does that chalk line get snapped?
Well, the state code says that our land book has to be printed by September 1st. I'm looking way ahead of that. I hope to have it done before July 1st. Once we get through our next group of hearings, we will have a much better idea of when we can finish up. I would like to get finished as quickly as possible, because I know all of y'all are waiting for final figures and that you need these. But I don't want to provide something that's not correct. There again, I don't mean to throw off on anybody, so please don't misunderstand me. But last year, after the land book was printed, there were over 3,000 errors that were discovered in it. That is not acceptable.
So, so far, you have found, your team has found 1.83% in the time that you've been back in the assessor role. Can you guesstimate, is there another 1.83% to find, or are we down to...
Easily.
Okay.
Easily. Like I say, we are, today, as a matter of fact, right before I came here, we looked at a number of condominiums. They all have to be changed. We're going to be, start working on that tomorrow. We're looking at neighborhoods, all of these neighborhoods are going to have to be changed. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to get to everything, because I've got to get the land book printed. But what we're doing is looking at those that are most, that are more greatly affected than others. And I really want to take a look at the older neighborhoods, because the older neighborhoods are so many of, is where so many of our older homes, older citizens, fixed incomes and so forth, houses that have not been kept up, because they don't have the money to do this. So, it's imperative that we go out and we take a look, you know? We want these people to understand that we're there to help them, we're not there to hurt them. But I can't have a house that's 102 years old with a 25% depreciation on it. I just can't do it. It's not fair to anybody, especially the homeowner. So, these are the things that we're addressing.
Have you found any, any times when the assessment actually has increased?
Oh, yes.
Or have they all been decreases?
We've found a couple that have actually increased, especially in our commercial. There have been a few of the residential's that have. And the reason being for that is there were changes, improvements to the property that had not been picked up. Swimming pools, decks, different things like that, rooms over garages. Now, why this wasn't done, I don't know. The building permits should be worked every single month. The neighborhood should be audited every single solitary year, because there's a tremendous amount of people who do construction and improvements to their homes without building permits. The only way to pick this up is to audit the neighborhood. And if you know your neighborhood, you can ride down the neighborhood and out of the corner of your eye, you're going to say, oh, something's not right with this house. And these are the things that happen. And when these things are not done, the citizens end up paying the price for it. And the city is losing money. They don't get the money for their building permits. And then, you get, it's time to reassess, and everybody starts raising cane because their assessment went up.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Culpepper?
Yes, sir.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
In terms of the Equalization Board, can you explain what that is? Because it may be some folks in the audience that don't know what the Equalization Board is.
The Board of Equalization are three landowners within the city of Portsmouth that are appointed by the circuit court. And they have the right and the ability to review our assessments. They look at our assessments and they look at the information also that's brought in by either a commercial business or by a homeowner that is challenging our assessment. And they have the right to make the determination which is correct and which is not correct. They can all, they could say, the assessor's right on this, there's going to be no change. Or, this person has a good point here, we're not going to completely change the assessment, but you need to reduce this by a certain percentage. And whatever they say is what we abide by, because these are court-appointed.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Culpepper, it was very appreciated.
You're welcome, thank you.
Madam City Manager, are there any other items that you have to present?
No, sir. This wraps up our presentation, presentations for the evening.
Thank you, ma'am. My colleagues on council, are there any council liaison reports at this time? Seeing none, then this work session is adjourned and we will reconvene at 7:00 PM for our regular council meeting.